Are we ready?
We're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the July 18th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Person Stefanski.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Vitale.
He is excused.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Wrote.
Here.
Nine present, one excused.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Stefanski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to Section D on the agendas. We have three public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution to approve a substantial amendment to the 2020-2024 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The first hearing here is to reallocate about just shy of $11,000 from a downtown pedestrian improvement project to another pedestrian improvement project on 92nd and Lincoln. That project, that shift of money would fund the installation of an adaptive or an accessible pedestrian signal, which allows audible sound and, I guess, visible and audible sounds for pedestrians crossing the street. So primarily used for pedestrians with low vision or no vision issues to cross, in this case, 92nd and Lincoln. The daily traffic counts at that intersection are fairly decent, about 8,000 per day on 92nd Street, then or South Street, and then east to west about $14,000, 14,000 cars per day through that intersection, east to west. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those right now, but what we're, the purpose of the shift here isn't, that downtown pedestrian improvement project, that project will still be implemented in the spring of next year. We just estimate that it's going to be, the amount of funding that we have in that fund is enough to cover what we want to do in the downtown area, so we want to take the additional monies shifted over 92nd and Lincoln to solve another pedestrian issue in that location. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alder Person Grisham.
Steve, how was this intersection selected above others?
Our engineering department came to us with an issue. Being in proximity to the hospital and, you know, with homes, commercial uses in that location, there was already complaints that the engineering was fielding with people with sight issues that are having a hard time crossing that intersection, so that's how it came to me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience on public hearing number one? Okay, we will close public hearing number one. We move on to item two. I'll ask the clerk to read out that public hearing.
Conditional use permit for Caribou Coffee, a proposed restaurant with accessory drive-through service at 10200 West National.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mayor. Caribou is a national chain with over 700 locations. They have a location here in West Dallas. It's within the Festival Foods Grocery Store on 111th and Greenfield Avenue. They're looking to build a freestanding store, a smaller 600-square-foot kiosk of sorts with a drive-through on 102nd and National. This is the former Baker Square location. The building within this blue boundary here is the former place where you'd go have a slice of pie, cup of coffee. That building has been occupied for the past few years and will be demolished to make way for the new coffee shop with drive-through. Property Zone C3 Commercial, which allows coffee, drive-through services as a conditional use. And the drive-through facility will be behind the building, so National Avenue being in the lower part of the screen here, 102nd to the east and right side. And then the Caribou Coffee is about 600 square feet in this location. It'd be a small patio out front, bike racks, landscaping, and then their point of sale where you order on the far east, and then you pick up at the window, and then either you could park and sit down or just drive away. But the parking will all be on the west side of the site. There will be adequate stacking for the drive-through lane area within this queue here. And then there will also be cross-access, cross-access to the north. Across the site, there's another developer looking at building a eye care clinic just to the north. That was the old Baker Square Production Facility, and that would be added on to make way for an ophthalmologist eye care clinic, modernize the building and that site as well. But that's a separate project. Our focus here is on the drive-through for the coffee. Just the floor plan and then the exterior look of the building. They have the different colored metal accents, the stone base, signage, and hardy plank siding, which is a cementitious type of lap siding in this case. And then the floor plan is primarily just for employees producing the coffee and then getting it out the drive-through window to customers that are pulling up. So Plan Commission has recommended approval of the conditional use and site plan, architectural plan on June 28th. The developer has complied with the various stormwater, site planning, landscaping, traffic management conditions. There has been one objection to date, and that's from adjacent property owner immediately to the west. So there's other competition in the area where Big B Coffee is locating in this gold area to the west with a similar type of product, you know, use. And yes, they are close together, but it's capitalism. So, I mean, we're moving on. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions on public hearing number two from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alder Person Grisham.
Steve, question for you. That proximity is very close to the 102nd Street Light, I believe. Is there going to be entrance on that 102nd National side when you're going east? I don't think there's a break in that, correct? They'd have to turn on 102nd in order to enter?
Correct. Further, the only way that you can come off of 102nd Street to access the site would be via the existing driveway, which is between the car dealership, there's a car dealership, I think, and International Autos, and then the backside of Baker Square Production.
Okay.
It's an existing, it looks like an alley that you can access Target, you can get to this site that way, but no new driveways on 102nd Street. Everything, all the driveways in this case are existing, and that's pretty much just off of National Avenue, and then the existing access off of 102nd further north.
If I'm correct, just preceding that street, there's a right turn only to 102nd, correct? Is there?
No, I think...
I thought it was a right turn only because you've got the ramp coming off the freeway?
No, that's up one.
That's up one? Okay. All right. That was just my question, the safety of the entrance.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, you referenced Big B, and I remember we approved that some time ago, and I haven't seen any work started on that. Do we know what's going on with that?
They're moving along. They're working through their, the building permit, and that will be breaking ground soon. They ran into some delays. They actually had, wanted to have the building up by now. They ran into some delays late last year, earlier this year, but that is still going forward.
Okay, and so this is not a restaurant. This is carryout only, correct?
This is, yeah, drive-up.
Drive-up or walk-up?
I don't believe there is a walk-up window. Yeah, there are bike racks, so, I mean, you could, I guess, you could pedal up to the drive-through window or an order.
And there's outside seating you showed on the plan.
Yep.
I guess my concern is, I'm just thinking, you know, I see a lot of communities are trying to dial back the drive-through experience. Maybe not dial back, but at least consider that it, how it contributes to the driving mentality and not the walkable community. And I understand this is in the Highway 100 corridor, National Avenue corridor. It's a little different animal than, say, Greenfield Avenue in the downtown. But I guess I'm not, just not a fan of these drive-through-only businesses. Do we know how many employees they're going to have? Three?
They're probably going to have three to four employees. And now they look at the floor plan, there is a, well, here, this window here also represented here in the floor plan. This is a...
Or is a walk-up window?
A walk-up window with a patio out in front and the bike racks, yeah.
And is there a public accessible restroom?
No, no, not in this situation.
So it's really not offering any amenities to their customers. It's, here's your coffee.
Get home before you have to go, yeah.
Drink it while you're driving home, or you can sit outside.
Right.
Okay. I guess I'm just, I'm just not seeing the community benefit here, but, like you said, it's capitalism.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, I mean, this is a conditional use. I mean, it is before the council. You know, our ordinance does not specifically prohibit drive-throughs, you know, in the zoning district. You know, that's definitely something to consider if council wants to take and discuss that.
I'm thinking about the context here. You're right, it is right off the freeway. It is kind of a, it's not a very walkable area right now. I mean, there's a sidewalk there, but there's not a lot of people walking. But this isn't going to help, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other questions from the common council? Alder Person Ranky.
Steve. Okay, thank you. Basically, it's a very small building, and on the synopsis, it did mention intended restaurant. Do they intend to have any food or just serve coffee?
Primarily, primarily coffee. That's their wheelhouse, and they may have some sandwiches and so on, you know, but it's primarily just the coffee drinks. They may have breakfast sandwiches and the sort, which would be very comparable to what Big B was offering. They have different small items.
This is the first one in our community, is that not correct?
Right.
Okay. It's in other communities, then?
Yeah, they have, they have other locations, primarily in Festival Food Stores, I think in Hartford and then South...
Oh, inside the store.
South 27th Street in Milwaukee and 111th in Greenfield.
Okay.
They're getting back, they had prior, maybe 10 years ago, there were a number of, I think in Malatosa, they had a freestanding store on Highway 100 and Blue Mound. That's all sort of changed. It's going more to the drive-through right now. It seems to be the demand for, to grab a, you know, sort of a fast casual, get a drink.
Looks like a very small building, though.
Very small. It's 600 square feet.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's literally, it's catering to the pass-by traffic within the area, people that work in the area or perhaps live or passing through the area.
Okay.
They can stop, stop in, hit the drive-through and move on.
Did they purchase the property?
Yes, yeah.
They purchased the property. I see. I guess I'm a little disappointed that there isn't a restaurant connected to it, but that's neither here nor there. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Turner.
Just want to ask one question. I can't really see very well, but if, knowing these places, usually you have a long line of cars all at one time, and going up against, is that going to be a problem? Because I know that if they do it correctly, they can do it. They're going to have like 10 cars waiting, but it might cause problems going into the street, especially National Avenue.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there is quite a bit of queuing here, you know, before you get out to National Avenue. And in looking at, I guess, some of the other, when we were evaluating the Big B Coffee and going to those locations that they have, I think it's further south, like Hales Corners or Franklin area, it was very, I mean, you have your peak, your peak moments in the morning, people are going to work, but even then, it wasn't, it wasn't like there was a line of cars going out, you know, the street. It was pretty much well-contained on site. Any other questions from the council?
Here I go again, Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grisham.
Kind of piggybacking Alderman Turner's question. On the site plan, because I can't see it either, is there going to be a dual drive-through or just a single drive-through?
It's just a single drive-through lane with, I think, a bailout lane here if you don't want to wait.
Is there room for a double?
That would be up to the, you know, developer, I guess. If they, if they wanted to pursue that, they would come back to us with that plan. But right now, it's just a single point of order and then a single area to pick up.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions from the common council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Weigel.
I'm going to credit Alder Person Turner with, so how many, what's the stacking capability on this location? Is it four?
I'm going to estimate. No, I mean, it's, so here's the window where you pick up, you know, you order and then pick up.
So it's all around that snake to the north?
Yeah, you're wrapping around.
Well, so it's like eight. It'll stack eight cars, and they won't back up onto National Avenue. They'll back up into that parking lot to the north.
Correct.
Correct. So if, so if, because you know what's going to happen. First week they're open, everybody's going to want to go there to try it. So even if there were 20 cars in line, they would not be stacking, if they were in line for the drive-through, they would not be backing up onto National Avenue. They'd be backed up into that parking lot.
That's correct.
Okay. I feel better about that. Thank you.
All right, once again, Alder Person Ranky.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Did you mention, it came before Plan Commission, did Plan Commission okay this?
Yes, yeah, Plan Commission approved it with some conditions, but it was approved in June. So they recommended it be referred to Common Council as the next step as part of the conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, who's next? All right, then we will see if there's anybody in the audience that has questions on public hearing number two. If you do, please approach the podium and give us your name and address, just for our record.
Hello, my name is Reed Yans. I'm an engineer at Excel Engineering who's produced these plans. Address 100 Camelot Drive, Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. To address some of the concerns as far as pedestrian accessibility goes on this site, we are proposing that large patio outside the building that will basically be connected right to the public accessible sidewalk with that walk-up window right there, being able to serve those customers and kind of create an environment that's very open and friendly within your community in building this coffee shop at this location. And, you know, when people see people out enjoying their coffee on the patio, you want to come up and have a cup of coffee and have a conversation. So as well as there is pedestrian access to the north as well, we're basically providing a sidewalk in connection up to that potential future development to the north as well there. So we are, we have multiple points of pedestrian access. That was an important component of the design to this project. Additionally, as far as traffic concerns, we did have a traffic impact analysis report completed with this project by an outside firm that was submitted to city staff as well as planning and zoning. It did basically show everything is adequate with what's being proposed, as has been previously mentioned. As, as has been previously mentioned, we do have plenty of stacking, basically utilizing our entire lot. The way we have the drive-through right next to the building there, your cars can stack up all along that whole drive-through way and then any additional within that parking lot. Within the site plan that we submitted, we did show 11 cars stacked up just within that drive-through area alone, not even considering the parking lot as stacking. And the amount of traffic generated was included within that report and has been documented as adequate for the site. As far as other concerns, being competitors, I did have a conversation with Caribou developers on that. They said that even though they are providing what most people would view as a similar product, they do view that they do have a different market share that they're going for within this market, and they're not concerned about Big B Coffee or any other threats in the area. They have an established business already within this community at Festival and are looking to expand their, their product options at this location. So they're really, really excited about this site and look forward to further expanding within this community.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Anybody else with comments, questions on the public hearing?
All right, I wasn't going to talk about this one, but Ed Losinski, yeah, Ed Losinski, 6620 West National Avenue, West Dallas, Wisconsin, 53214. Wasn't going to talk about this, but as long as the architect is here, I just want to make a comment that, make sure that you are checking the IBC. I believe it's going off a memory here, 2902.3.2, which will tell you that toilet rooms cannot open into, directly into a room used for preparation of food for the public. So you may need to cut that toilet room off from the kitchen area as long as they are doing food, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?
Mayor Devine, I changed my mind and I have a question.
You have to go in the audience now, sorry.
So is Caribou then going to completely remove the footprint from Festival Foods? Or are they going to have both?
They'll have both.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? All right, I'm going to close public hearing number two. Got our money's worth on that one. I will now ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
Conditional use permit for automotive vision designs, a proposed light motor vehicle service use at 111 through 3 West Rogers Street.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mayor. We're recommending to hold action on this item tonight, but we'll conduct the public hearing. This is a location at 111th and Rogers Street, next to Manis's Trucking and just west of a Badger Truck Facility. But Automotive Vision Designs is a tinting detailing type of business. They're open Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No interior or exterior changes ever proposed, and the property is zoned light industrial. Being a car or vehicle service type of use, it does require a conditional use. The lot is currently paved and will be, a small portion of it would be utilized for the proposed use. They don't anticipate a lot of overflow parking needs. They work in a small number of cars throughout the day. Typically, at any one time, they could have three cars within the 3,000-square-foot lease area, and the lease area is actually on the east side of the building, and then right outside of that is the parking area. So any cars waiting for service would be staged within that paved parking area, but the turnover is fairly routine and frequent, most, most work being done within a couple of hours. That's the location within the larger building. And Plan Commission has recommended approval. The reason for holding action on this item tonight is because there are some code violations. There's an occupancy permit that was applied for back in December of last year, which still hasn't been satisfied. In speaking with the applicant earlier today, they are interested in solving those issues with building, plumbing, and electrical, and are working on a plan to get that complete so that an occupancy may be issued or at least tracked towards completion. And at that time, we would bring back the item to Common Council on completion of that, those occupancy requirements for approval. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to assume there are no questions because we're holding this.
I do have one question, though.
Go ahead.
Since we're doing a public hearing, when they, if this does get approved and they get to do this, are they going to be doing legal tinting, so they're not going to be allowed to do any illegal tinting of windows?
I didn't ask that question, but that would be advised, yeah. I don't believe the tinting of the windows is actually illegal, but it's just driving around with tinted windows that's illegal.
So it's illegal?
Kind of like, never mind.
It's like owning a gun, that's how you use it.
All right, any other questions from the council on public hearing three? Seeing none, are there any questions from the audience on public hearing number three? Seeing none, then we will close our third public hearing and our final public hearing. Thanks, everybody. And we will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is when the council may receive information from members of the public. This 30-minute period, we ask that you announce your name and address when you come up to the microphone. We ask that you limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. Council cannot take action on the topics raised. We cannot debate the topics either. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Good evening.
Sir.
Ed Losinski, 6620 West National Avenue. I just wanted to let everybody know, last Friday, the American Cancer Society held their Relay for Life for the Greater Milwaukee Chapter, right here in West Dallas, as we do every year. The weather didn't really cooperate as much with us this year. We had some lightning storms that came in Friday night, so we did have to cut it a little bit short, but it still was a pretty successful fundraiser. We raised just over $40,000. We're still a little bit short from last year's total. We were closer to $41,000 last year, so any donations that come in between now and the end of August still count towards this year's relay, so if any, you know, anyone from the council here, anybody from the audience, anybody watching at home, wants to still get out there and donate, they can just do a quick Google search for Relay for Life. When you hit the Donate Now button, you can find the Relay for Life for Greater Milwaukee. You can still make donations, like I said, until the end of August, and we'd really love to see some of you out there next year. It's usually right around this same time, kind of mid-July every year, on a Friday night out at the Athletic Complex out by Hales, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? All right, we will close item E, and we will go to page two, Section F. Our standing committee meetings will be taking place tonight during recess. If you are here for a license or something that requires committee action, please check the top of page two on the agendas or just ask one of us when we break for recess and start to go into those committee meetings, but we'll get you in the right direction. Those room numbers are listed on the top of page two. Moving to item G, the mayor's report. Just one quick thing, I want to just thank everybody who helped put together the city's Independence Day festivities. The parade, as well as the fireworks, were held at a new location, I'll bet, Nathan Hale High School at the Athletic Complex, which overall I heard very positive things about, but it was a lot of pivoting for staff and organizers in the school district, and I want to thank Festival Foods once again for sponsoring the fireworks. I want to thank the sponsors of the parade, and I think everything went really well. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any other persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I just wanted to do a quick recap on the Cheese Wheel Classic Bike Race that was held and over on the Blocks on Beach here on Tuesday, June 20th. Seems like it was a long time ago. I guess I wanted to thank Mark Lutz, the owner at West Dallas Cheese and Sausage, for his sponsorship. I believe it was another successful event for him. We had better weather this year, it was well-attended. Also noticed the neighbors seemed to be getting more engaged with it and only had really one complaint about issues with parking and access during the race. So again, that went very well. Also wanted to thank, I go to a lot of events, events like this, and volunteers are the backbone of these kinds of things. I mean, there's paid staff that runs the race, but the actual, 90% of the legwork is done by volunteers. And I'm going to guess all of them were from West Dallas for this race? Almost all. I want to thank Razal O'Crulico, she was a volunteer coordinator for the race again this year. And if you know Razal, she has not had her baby yet, she's due this week, so if you see her, say hi to her. Thanks.
And she still came to the neighborhood association's meeting last night. We were standing by. Any other Alder person's reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alder Person Grisham.
I just want to remind the community that the West Dallas Police Department is asking for you to join them for West Dallas Night Out on Monday, July 24th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's an event that is going to be held at the West Dallas Farmers Market. There's a bike helmet giveaway, free kids activities, food trucks, raffle baskets, local... vendors, craft sales, face painting, you name it, firefighters host challenge, pony rides. There's going to be raffle baskets as well. I know that there's a nice representation of our neighborhood associations as well. So hope to see everybody out there, and if not there, hosting your own neighborhood night out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elder persons' reports? Okay, we'll go to item I.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council meeting of June 6, 2023.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. On item J, we have no standing committee report, so we'll go right to item K.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I believe there's a correction on the agenda this evening. The clerk could please read that.
Item number 40. Item number 40 needs to go to the Economic Development Committee, not the Public Works
Is there any other items that any council member would like to have changed or read separately?
Mr. President, I would like item 22 read separately and request that it be put to committee of the whole.
Okay, that's noted. And I would move for the consent agenda to be approved as printed with the exception of that item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there are any discussion? Hearing none?
Mayor Devine.
Oh.
On number 18, there's a typo area. Does that have to be noted as well? Mansion 16th Street?
Oh, should be 116th.
It should be 116th.
Yeah.
Because Rosie's on top of it.
We'll make that correction. Make sure to keep that money in West Dallas. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Weigle.
Aye.
Grisham. Aye. Haas.
Aye.
Keen. Aye. Lysick.
Aye.
Frankie.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, and then we have...
Mayor Devine.
Go ahead.
I move we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Do we want to first send officially the item 22 to the committee of the whole?
Well, I think that happens automatically, doesn't it? If an alderman requests, it's something we move to the committee of the whole that goes to the committee of the whole. Doesn't take action of the whole council to move something to the committee of the whole.
Okay.
Just the recommendation by one alder, asking by one alderperson.
Okay. And back to the, what's that? Oh, okay.
Then I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.